Hey, everybody. If you all would grab a seat. It is 6 o'clock and we're going to get started here. Thanks for coming. Welcome. All right. Welcome to the Williamson County Growth Coordinating Committee. Tonight is a public hearing, November 15, 2023. At this time, I would ask that you stand as we say the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. At this time, I would ask, starting with Eric Stuckey, to please introduce yourself to the group. State the reason that you're here and what municipality that you're from.
Eric. Hi, I'm Eric Stuckey. I'm the City Administrator for the City of Franklin, and my role specifically on this board of committee is representing the largest municipally-owned utility.
Thank you.
I'm John Schrader, and I've been asked by the city to sit on this committee as just a private citizen.
And I'm Chuck Barber with Little Tennessee Electric, and we're representing the largest utility.
I'm Bob Ring. I represent the Soil and Water Conservation Board of the Week House.
I'm Hailey Gallic. I'm the Mayor for the Town of Nolentown.
Good evening. I'm Jim Haglen, Mayor of Spring Hill.
Good evening. My name is Mark Gorman. I'm the Mayor of Brentwood and the Vice Chair of the Committee. I'll be running the meeting tonight since County Mayor Rogers Anderson is unable to be with us.
I'm Lisa Anderson. I'm the Mayor of Fairview, Tennessee.
Brian Stever, Mayor of Thompson Station, Tennessee.
I'm Judy Herbert. Can you hear me? I'm Judy Herbert. I'm second District County Commissioner.
Very good. With that, I'd like to ask Greg Dale, the facilitator from McBride and Dale, to come up and talk a little bit about the process that we're going through. Greg.
Thank you, Mayor. What I propose to do is to do a maybe slightly shorter overview of what is the same presentation that this group saw last week. I think that most of the people in the audience has probably heard this as well, so I won't dwell quite as much on the details. But just in terms of the -- there we go. Thank you. I think we're all aware that we're here under Tennessee law, specifically Public Chapter 1101, which provides for this growth planning process. And I think by now, we're all familiar with the terminology that we're using. It's the urban growth areas or urban growth boundaries for those areas outside of the municipalities. It's the planned growth areas, which are the areas that are in unincorporated Williamson County that are called for for some growth, and then the rural areas is the area that's remaining. We're in the process of updating a plan that was first adopted in 2001, and it hasn't been amended since that time. And as we know, the seven jurisdictions, that's the six municipalities and the county, have come together to update that. The process that's been followed has been a fairly lengthy process so far. It started with an advisory committee that worked with representatives of all of the jurisdictions and other stakeholders as now represented on this group. Each of the jurisdictions, each of the six municipalities in the county engaged in extensive detailed planning for their own growth areas. Each of the jurisdictions engaged in their own public outreach at the beginning of the process. We worked with this group to develop a series of guiding principles and implementation strategies that I'll describe here in just a minute. We had this symposium where we had speakers from other areas that engaged in similar kinds of growth planning, conducted the symposium with that. Multiple rounds of boundary discussions and modifications and tinkering at both the advisory group level and at the coordinating committee level, which was formed. Each of the individual jurisdictions had their own formal public hearings, and based upon that, the coordinating committee last month acted to forward the plan for consideration at the public hearings, which is what we're doing right now. That's where we are in the process. The guiding principles really served as kind of a compass for this discussion as it's unfolded and involved a series of ideas. One of them is just to acknowledge and essentially a declaration that the communities desired to work together to engage in this process, set a 20-year planning horizon, agreed to work with growth forecasts, both forecasts that each of the individual jurisdictions we're working with, as well as a common set of growth forecasts prepared by the University of Tennessee, recognize the importance of the public facilities and fiscal sustainability. That is the idea that these growth areas should identify areas that could be efficiently served with public services and facilities in a fiscally responsible manner, reflecting a strong desire to maintain what we referred to as the regional form, and that's very simply a sense of distinction between communities, between urban and suburban and rural, as opposed to the kind of sprawled development pattern. Resource protection, respecting local autonomy, building on local planning. Again, this process has never been intended to be a substitute for local planning that has occurred and will continue to occur, is expected to continue to occur in each community through comprehensive plans, area plans, other sorts of planning activities. And then ultimately, the idea that the policies that come out of this process and the boundaries that come out of this process are intended to be essentially buttoned down, if you will, through a series of interlocal agreements. From there -- I'm sorry, I jumped over that. From there, we developed a series of goals and kind of implementation strategies. That first goal relates to the idea of trying to not just think about the boundaries, but to make sure that the boundaries and the areas within those boundaries function as optimally as possible. So we talked about developing interim policies that could relate to how those areas within the growth boundaries are zoned, how they might be provided with services particularly related to wastewater, and the possible use of interlocal agreements. And then the other thing that was a key component of this discussion is the expected agreement through an interlocal agreement that, once these boundaries are put into place, that each of the jurisdictions agrees that they won't annex outside of those boundaries. That's the purpose of the boundaries, is to identify those future growth areas. The second goal really related to the idea of this sort of collaborative coordinated planning to continue on some sort of regular basis, and a couple of things were built into that. One was the agreement that this process would be revisited in five years, not wait another 20 years, that there's a formal agreement that would occur within five years. The other related aspect is that a group, something like the coordinating committee, it wouldn't be the actual coordinating committee, but the jurisdictions and the special -- the stakeholders would be represented in some sort of ongoing planning activities. And we loosely use the term implementation oversight committee, or, you know, something like that, that basically this kind of group would continue to meet on perhaps a quarterly basis to continue to be a forum for communication, to continue to look at these issues so that, you know, when it gets revisited in five years, hopefully, it's a, you know, it's kind of the reflection of an ongoing process. And then in particular, there was a desire to kind of tee up the topic of transportation. I think we all know, you all know, that transportation is a pressing issue for the county, and many of those issues need to be addressed on a multi-jurisdictional basis. And so the idea is that perhaps that would be one of the first agenda items that would be addressed in this ongoing planning activity. The maps are pretty self-explanatory. This is a map of the existing boundaries. This is a map of the proposed boundaries that I think everyone's become pretty familiar with at this point. As in the previous meeting, I also wanted to indicate that the county in particular has asked for, is encouraging comment on two areas in particular, and that is the Arrington and Triune areas. And so on this map, the green boundaries, I know they're hard to read on this map, but the green boundaries, the green parcels immediately adjacent to the proposed planned growth areas are areas that the county is particularly interested in receiving comments on. So, Mr. Mayor, that concludes my comments, and I will leave this up this time. We can, we have it over here, so we can pull the map back up.
Thank you very much, Greg.
Thank you.
At this time, we will start the public hearing. What I would ask is, when you come up, if you can keep your comments to three minutes or less, that would be appreciated. This evening, we have three pages of folks set to speak. This is your time to speak, and just because you didn't sign up doesn't mean you can't speak. We'll make time at the end if you did not sign up and you would like to speak. But with that, we will start with Justin Lanning this evening, and then behind Justin will be Brenda Booker. Justin.
Yeah. Thank you for your time. Justin Lanning, 1725 Barker Road in Thompson Station. Appreciate everyone's thought, leadership that's gone into this. Really think there's been a lot of consideration, but also think there's still some things for the group to think through. I appreciate that there's been some flexibility up to this point in time. There's a couple of things. I know this is our time for public comment. There's other things on the record prior, so I just want to focus on a couple of other things. I know you're all going to have to weigh out. When this goes to the state, is it going to come back in a different form, or is this something that's going to stand? And I think there are several of you who are really thoroughly thinking about that, and I appreciate that. Seems like with it being in five years, as you, as Greg just stated, there might be some of these regions that need to be thoroughly thought about in your upcoming meetings that might be beyond where any plans are today. I would like to ask that in your upcoming meetings, when you're talking about this over your next three meetings, there's an intersection there at 840 and Carter's Creek Road, which actually bumps right up against, many of you may not know that area super well, but it bumps right up against a hamlet, which is called the Burrwood. That's Huff's store. If you've ever been in there, you know where that's at. And it's also overlapping right on top of the Burrwood Community Center. And so I would ask that if Thompson Station has plans for that area, or, because that's part of this process, you're supposed to have plans and have thoughts about that. Otherwise, I would propose, let's get that back to the original UGB area over there and tell, and then review that in five years and propose if there's plans. So I would ask that you seriously consider that on those fronts. So appreciate your time. Just one of those areas that's worth thinking about and making sure it doesn't come back from the state in a form that might not be desired. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next is Brenda Booker, and then after that is Prav Keady. I might have that wrong. The reading or the writing's hard to read here. I would ask that you identify yourself for the record, and then the town, the area of the county that you live in, please. Brenda.
My name is Brenda K. Booker, and I live at 1706 Joe Pope Road, Thompson Station. I grew up in Franklin. Some of you may have heard of the Bookers of Franklin, whose parents raised 12 children who all graduated from college. My parents are the late M.J. Booker and Mary Pope Booker. My mother, Mary Pope Booker, was sixth-generation Pope that grew up in this area. Last week, my sister Sheri told you a little about our proud Pope family history. She told how eight generations have lived on farmland in this area. She told how our great-great-grandfather, Osborne Pope, a descendant of slave, Patience Pope, purchased parts of the land in the 1880s. It also could be mentioned that our grandfather, Joe Pope Sr., donated the land housing the road that bears his name. As I listened last week to the different people who spoke, I wondered if what could possibly be said to convince this chamber to hear our pleas and be convinced to preserve the rural aesthetics in this area. As an engineer who designed signal and lighting systems throughout the state of Tennessee, I know that with growth and expansion comes new and more roads, upgraded roads, more light to the area, and the need for water and sewer upgrades. In the area where I now live, nights are darker, and the temperature is typically one to two degrees lower than where I grew up in Franklin, not to mention the parking lot on the interstate Route 31 and traffic on Carter's Creek Pike during rush hour. My siblings still routinely gather at my house on Joe Pope Road that is lovely and without second thought, thought of as going out to the country. As children, we visited Pope family property in the country then and still now has a rural vibe. Some would say that the rural aesthetics is part of the county's charm, so I pray that there is space for some areas within this jurisdiction of Williamson County to maintain this rural aesthetic. So, after all, once all is said and done, once this rural aesthetic is gone, we can't get it back.
Thank you, Judy. Judy made me aware that somebody thinks they signed the wrong sheet. Henry, if you would like to come up and speak.
My name is Henry Hafner, and I own the farm at 2795 Owl Hollow Road. I appreciate the chance to jump in here. I actually have to go to work here in just a second. I'm the music director at a church on the other side of town, and we have choir practice starting in about half an hour, so I'll make this fast. I didn't want to miss a chance to speak against the proposed expansion of Spring Hill's UGB. I represent the Owl Hollow and Duplex communities, most of whom are small farmers. The vast majority of these residents wish to be removed from Spring Hill's UGB and remain in Williamson County. At the October meeting, we were asked for signatures and parcel numbers for each resident that wanted to be removed. We gathered all that information and presented it to y'all last week in hard copies, as well as in digital form. To remind you, for those that weren't here, 137 landowners, over 95% of the residents of Owl Hollow and Duplex, asked to be removed. We've done everything y'all have asked and hope that y'all will honor the proposal made back in October by the mayors of Brentwood and Fairview to remove the landowners that wished to be removed. We understand that being in the UGB is not annexation. We understand that being in the UGB may increase property values, but if you surround us with development, you force us out, and there's nowhere else in Williamson County that we can afford to go. I said before, the folks in Owl Hollow and Duplex are mostly generational farmers. Most of my ancestors are buried just up the road here in Mount Halt Cemetery, and many of those were here in Williamson County before the war. We ask you not to drive us out of the county that we've called home for the past two centuries. Spring Hill is asking for too much. We ask that y'all please remove us from the Spring Hill UGB or vote against Spring Hill's expansion when it comes to a vote. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Prav Keady from Spring Hill, Lewisburg. Sorry, I had a hard time reading the handwriting.
My name is Priscilla Keady, and I live on 2490 Lewisburg Pike here in Williamson County, Spring Hill, Tennessee. I grew up in South Davidson County, and I've been in and out of Williamson County my entire life. When I was in Davidson County, that southern part, it was rural at that time, and it's a lifestyle that I chose to continue living. My parents, I'm proud to say, moved down into the Bethesda community in 1979, and from that time on, I continued to visit this area of the country. And in 1995, I was able to purchase a piece of property on Lewisburg Pike. I'd like to read a brief excerpt from Wendell Berry, a piece called "Citizens' Response", and it says, "Increasingly, Americans, including notoriously their politicians, are not from anywhere. And so they have in this homeland, which their government now seeks to make secure on their behalf, no home place, that they are strongly moved to know, or love, or use well, or protect." I found a home place on Lewisburg Pike. I chose my home place and my community. My children went to school at Bethesda and Page. I'm blessed to continue learning about my land, loving every single day I wake up, and grateful for retirement this year so that I can continue to spend more time on my land. And I desire to protect it from the proposed Spring Hill urban growth boundary. I want to stay where I am, and I want to continue to enjoy the community that I have right now. Thank you very much for your time.
All right. Next is Karen Smith, and after that is Jason Cordone.
Hi, I'm Karen Smith, and my husband is Lynn Smith, and we live at 4343 North Chapel Road, and I'm a 24-year resident of North Chapel. And my neighbors and I here tonight would like to discuss the UGB in the Franklin city limits. The word urban is used to describe a region surrounding a city, very developed, where there is density of people, houses, commercial buildings, roads, bridges, and railways. The word country is used to describe the land outside the town and city with fields, woods, and farms. It is also used when talking about beauty or peacefulness of an area. 24 years ago, we bought our land, and then we saved up to build our house. We signed up for country, and we would like it to remain country. Myself and my neighbors on North Chapel have all worked very hard to stay in the country. We all know that growth is inevitable, and we need to embrace it if it is responsible, managed growth. Proper growth can and should benefit the landowners who perhaps want to sell their land, or those that have existing homes on the land and want to remain in the country. However, a development without having public safety, infrastructure, schools, or budget plans in place before building is not responsible, managed growth. I don't understand why we need high-density housing in the Maze Creek Basin area. What happened to the one-home-per-five-acre directive? Right now, try turning left off of North Chapel onto 96. It is super scary. Why do we need commercialization on all four corners of North Chapel? Any kind of retail you would possibly want is three miles up the road on Carruthers. And now you try to get past Carruthers to turn on I-65 or get to downtown Franklin, and there's a traffic jam just about every day. Next commercialization will be going all the way on 96 to Murphysboro, and I just don't understand how that keeps it country. It doesn't. It's no longer country. It's all urban. We only see one-sided plan that benefits the developers who don't necessarily live here. Please, please, please listen to the people who do live here. And listen, let's regroup with the residents and come up with a transitional growth plan that benefits all of us. The Maze Creek Basin people are here tonight because we care about keeping the country in the basin. We do not want to be part of this UBG of the City of Franklin. Thank you.
You have Jason Cordone, and then after that, Pat.
Good evening, community members. My name is Jason Cordova. I live in Bridmore Village in Thompson Station. I first fell in love with Tennessee as a 22-year-old lieutenant stationed at Fort Campbell. There's just something about this place, the overall beauty of the land and the serenity of the land. What prompted me to stand up today was, after being stuck in traffic again on 31 and Thompson Station East, I watched this beautiful pasture get absolutely obliterated by bulldozers to cram yet another neighborhood. The traffic here is getting worse and more dangerous. I find myself on traffic at 84 and 4, excuse me, on 840 and 431, getting nearly rear-ended at 70 miles an hour on a daily basis with the track, with the backup on Lewisburg Pike. The traffic congestion is up, the quality of life is quickly going down, which leads to my question, why are we seemingly growing this area into an urban center? If I wanted to be stuck in traffic, I'd move back to Nashville. Which leads to my question, why are we -- It looks like there are at least 6,000 new homes or townhomes going into Thompson Station, and if you factor in the 2,900 homes that are going into June Lake and the 240 apartments going into Sanctuary Bluff, that's more than 9,000 doors, 18,000 cars already going into our saturated roads. Where the kids, the kids are going to go to school. Because I've seen enough of the ambitious growth at Thompson Station, I decided to leave, so I started to build another home out in the county on 22 acres to find all the things I'm now trying to run from are following me. Like everyone else, I had no idea about this. I got half of my future neighbors assigned affidavits to opt out in less than 24 hours about finding out about this meeting. Me and my neighbors in Canard Springs and the surrounding areas, namely District 9, want out of the urban growth boundary. We want no part of this. We are no longer at the point where asking the question of, can we develop? Because of course you can. The question now is, should you develop? And the answer is no, resounding no. I know you have a difficult job. I was once an HOA president of 470 homes, and I learned quick that you cannot make everyone happy all the time, just hope some of the time. But it appears, though, the only people being made happy all of the time here are the developers. Now, whether or not that's the fact, that is our perception. I'm a former Army commander and a successful business owner, and I found the keys to success, quite frankly, pretty simple. One, work hard, and two, listen to the troops. Now, I know you hear me, you hear them, but are you listening to us? And for those, for those, and for those that are, for those that are visual learners like me, this is how we feel. We want the unbridled growth and the destruction to stop. So respectfully, please give us a say in what is happening in our neighborhoods and our beautiful lands nearby, and please allow us to be removed from the urban growth boundary. So if you agree, stand up and be heard. Thank you.
Next, we have Pat Garmary, and then after that, we have Pam Pedrick.
What's next?
Pat on Lewisburg Pike, G-A-R, and then it --
Garmary. Some of you know me from three or four years ago when we were working very hard in the Bethesda area as a community, and we came together and we were able to be successful at that time of keeping out a high-end gun club. Nothing wrong with having a gun, but I don't want them shooting at me and my house and my neighbors. And so thank you for many of your support in this room. I don't have prepared remarks, but if you'd like to know what I'm always thinking when I am making an appointment, it's like, okay, I can't make it till 10:00 a.m. because I can't even get out of my driveway at 7:00 a.m., at 7:30, at 8:00, 8:30, 9:00. If I do get out, I am then stuck in bumper-to-bumper traffic on Lewisburg Pike, and I live in the Bethesda area around Duplex, so giving you an idea where we are. We've been there for 45 years. We love the farms. You cannot continue to do all this development. If I want to sell my farm, you're making me put one home per five acres, and then you have some developers walk in, and all of a sudden, we lose the rabbit farm. I was here when there were like 200 or 300 people that came and said, please, we don't want this. And the gavel went down, and we have decided last month, that has been, that's done. We're not going to, you can go outside, we don't even want to talk to you. That's how the community was treated that night. I saw it, and I felt it, and I see it every day now. For those of us that travel 431, there we are. Well, thank goodness, we got a little turn lane. And how many trees were obliterated on that corner? You know? You know? Look, please listen to us. That gentleman had just, he said it all. You have got to stop this. You have to put in infrastructure first, and then the development. Please. You are, we're losing everything that we are. What happened to the 2040 plan? That we were going to really control growth? And all of a sudden, here comes urban growth areas. I do not want to be in Spring Hill, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, and I do not want to be in Thompson Station. Don't you dare try to take us in. You came out of 431 with me, you know? Thank you. Thank you for listening. Please, listen.
All right. Next, we've got a lively crowd, for sure. We want to make sure that everybody gets a chance to make their thoughts and feelings known. So, next is Pam Pedrick, and then after that, Andrew Keenan.
Hello, I'm Pam Pedrick. I live at 4626 Will Hoyt Road in Franklin, which it's Pam Will Hoyt Pedrick, by the way. The Will Hoyt families lived in Williamson County for several generations. My dad and I retain a small piece of that farm today. In the 1930s, my grandmother was attending a home demonstration club meeting, which is obsolete today, and the ladies in the community decided to name their farms. My grandmother named our farm Hollow Beach Farm, and to me, it remains Hollow Beach Farm today. My dad was actually born on this property, and he will soon be 92 years old. Luckily, the original acreage has remained farmland until recently. Will Hoyt Road is now sandwiched between what used to be the McWherter property, or the Rolling Hill property, or the Gunn property, and the 300 acres also, which is the Ferrari property that was just annexed and/or taken into Thompson Station. So we're right in the middle. We're about 2/10ths of the miles north of the June Lake Exchange on Lewisburg Pike. There's no way we're going to get out of Will Hoyt Road. I mean, it's a traffic jam. We are currently not in the current UGB planning. However, a couple years ago, with Thompson Station, we had to get out of it at that time. It was writing on the wall. But we will be, because we're a sandwich. We're right between where Thompson Station wants to grab and Spring Hill wants to grab. So it's just a matter of time. Neither of these cities has the capacity to provide any benefits. It's just a grab for additional tax dollars and to supplement and to pacify the developers. My daughter's family has lived in Thompson Station city limits for about 20 years. Yet, they went and asked for, to purchase a sewer tap when the schools were going in on Clayton Arnold Road. They were told at that time, the sewer taps had all been sold. There were none available for an individual property owner. They have no services. They get nothing and pay taxes for it. My father, being 92, cannot afford any more taxes. The Williamson County taxes will have to go up because there's got to be more schools built. I'm certainly not a transportation engineer, I'm a retired banker, but I do have common sense and travel these roads daily. And the June Lake Exchange, the widening of Buckner, will do nothing to change the gridlock in southern Williamson County until the widening of I-65, the widening of 431, and there's, I have no clue how anybody could possibly consider widening 31. The town is built right on 31. That's poor planning is already in the rearview mirror there in the Spring Hill Main Street. I'm not opposed to change or development, but this has got to be stopped until the true problems have been addressed. Thank you.
Next, we have Andrew Keenan, and then Laura Dennehy after that.
Good evening. I'm Andrew Keenan of West Harpeth Road. Thank you to everyone in this committee for the time you've spent with this endeavor. As a resident of West Harpeth Road, I would like to ask you to consider removing the Ozad property. This is the 150-acre property Thompson Station has been making agreements with for over 10 years, even though it was previously in Franklin's urban growth boundary until this past year. Please keep this property in the county to reduce the density footprint of the future neighborhood and to avoid adding another 55 acres of sewage drip field in an area that already has an existing drip field with more in the works nearby. Thompson Station previously attempted to say that they would develop even better than the county, stating that they have better open space allotment. This is pretty safe to say, they no longer support that claim, especially since the drawing board plans clearly list out the total usable, total usable open space provided is a measly 7.88 acres, which according to them is 9.51% of the residential land area, and really only around 5% of the entire 150-acre development. These numbers come directly from the plan in the document that I'll be turning over to the speech, so you can see what they have planned right here. So again, I ask at a minimum, please take out the Ozad property and let it develop in the county. However, you can see by listening to all of these citizens in the past few weeks, there are only two municipalities that there have really been problems with, Thompson Station and Spring Hill. I have a proposition on how we can listen to your constituents and how to make this simple. Remove all of the new urban growth boundary plans for these two municipalities. Spring Hill is behind on their infrastructure. Just one of their new developments is nearly 3,000 housing units. You can check traffic nearby any time of the day, and there's always traffic in Spring Hill. There's only one road through the town. Let them catch up. Thompson Station is behind on sewage needs and services. They have no fire, police, or sewer system. They're even having to pause at least one development until they can connect it to the sewer because they don't have capacity. Let them take a couple of years to build the sewage plant that they need to get up to par. Let them take time, let them catch up. The best planner knows when to take a pause and catch up on projects before making problems worse. Even the smartest city planners need this reminder before being more of a burden on the rest of the county. Whether the burden means changing our beautiful open space to sewage brown spaces, creating more houses with reliance on the county for fire, police, and school capacity, or overbuilding without having the roads to back it up, it seems that some city planners and politicians, this is all just a game, and not everyday quality of life they're interfering with. Please vote to maintain Williamson County, a desirable area, and not one of those places that grew too much and too fast. You have time to make the change now before it becomes too late, as some of the issues already have become. Thank you.
After Lorna, we have Charlie Huff.
Hi there. My name's Lorna Dennehy, and I currently reside in the town of Thompson Station. I was keeping a little stick tally, and so far, we're eight against the urban growth boundaries and 0.4. So I thought I'd get to speak a little later and maybe have a bigger count for you, but clearly, we have some issues to work through. All aboard Thompson Station was adopted by Thompson Station in March of 2023. One of the key phrases throughout this guiding document is that Thompson Station goal is to keep with its rural, small-town character. I believe that we should consider what we are doing with that goal in mind. I have a large development in progress behind me. Parsons Valley is 354 homes in a D3 zone. However, 50 of the acres were unbuildable, and our town allowed these are homes to build 350 on approximately 60 acres, which is 5.2 per acre, nearly double what the zone allows. I thought I was getting three backyard neighbors, I'm getting seven. Now, I live in the town limit, so I'm not saying, don't build behind me, but in no way did I think I was going to get seven neighbors. Well, 354, if you count them all. Recently, there have been three wastewater applications for three 300-unit apartments on Columbia Pike and Thompson Station Road. Where does rural, small-town character come with 300-unit apartments? How about three 300-unit apartments? The park at Thompson Station is one of these. It's a 365-unit complex proposed for the intersection of Columbia Pike and Thompson Station Road. I cannot think of a worse location for 365 apartments. This is the most underperforming, overused intersection in our town. I sit at this light often and see three cars go through on the yellow area, the yellow era, yellow arrow, and I see five go through on the red. People are mad, they're frustrated, they're sitting in traffic for a long time. Our roads are not ready for more development. It's not rural, small-town growth that's being proposed here, 300-unit apartment buildings. All aboard also states that Columbia Pike and Thompson Station Road are failing. Both are operating at a Level of Service D or a Level of Service F. If our main arteries in Thompson Station are already not serving the existing population, why are we adding more homes and more people? Does one person sitting here today believe it'll be easier to widen the roads when we have added potentially 2,500 more doors and 5,000 more people? And that's a low estimate. Let's consider the goal of rural, small-town character before adding more growth to Thompson Station. And let's ask ourselves, who benefits from this growth? Is it the town treasure? Is it the developers? Because it's not the people. Thank you.
Now, we have Charlie Huff, and then after that, Andrew Kelly.
Good afternoon. I'm Charlie Huff from the Burwood community, the owner and proprietor of Huff Grocery. And I thank you for this opportunity to talk tonight. I love the passion and conviction that this crowd has.
And sir, thank you for your service.
You have to understand where we come from. I'm a 62-year-old man. I grew up in Burwood, and I've been there by the grace of God my whole life. And I'm grateful for that, and I love the country and what it brings. And we don't need the growth and that urban boundary that wants to swallow us up, up to 840. Burwood, Leapers Fort, Bethesda, you can hear people say, there's parts of the county that needs to remain rural so we don't lose our heritage and our identity of Williamson County. You have growth in Franklin, Brentwood, Lowndesville, Fairview, Spring Hill. It doesn't have to encompass all of Williamson County. You need the green space. You need it. I talk to so many people that just say, I love driving out in the country. Well, I tell you what, we love living out in the country. We do. And I appreciate it. I appreciate the mayor of Fairview and the mayor of Brentwood for the consideration that you've given us. And I just want to take this opportunity to leave you with one thing. The right thing is the easiest thing to do. Why is it the hardest thing to do? Why is it the hardest thing for people to do? Do the right thing. Leave us alone. Thank you.
Now, we have Andrew Kelly, and after that, Charlie Hafner.
Good evening. My name's Andrew Kelly. I'm at 1305 Aaron Lane, Franklin, down off the West Harpeth Road area. And I apologize for my accent. I moved here about a year ago from Boston. And, thank you. And I thought I kind of got away from all this crud. Not really having a say, not really having a voice, your elected officials not listening to you. Well, I guess we're back at it. All I can say is, you know, a couple quotes here, a couple, back in June 15th this year, 2023, at one of the Planning Commission, Franklin Planning Commission meetings, "The city of Franklin is proposing a reduction of the UGB along US 31 Columbia Pike. Reductions will help preserve the rural characters of the area." What did Franklin do? Planning Board, they gave, they gave it the UGB, the land, the okay, the right to go, okay, let's, let's see if we can give it to Thompson Station, let Thompson Station deal with it. Then Thompson Station, directly from their website, "Community input, they had several meetings that were held to obtain input from Thompson Station residents to identify concerns." Issues that were identified were the importance of the growth management. Doesn't look like it's happening. Infrastructure, it's not there yet, so it doesn't look like it's happening. Preservation of natural resources, doesn't look like it's going to happen. Quality of parks, okay, maybe we'll get a few more there. Preservation of the town as a rural atmosphere. Again, I'm not getting that sense here. I don't know if anybody else is. It just doesn't seem like it's going to be a rural area. Some quick numbers, I know we've thrown some numbers out. Again, thank you for your service as well, and those who else are here who have served, that, you know, there's roughly 2,700, 3,000 homes and apartments being built on paper right now to be built or being built in Thompson Station. You just throw, you know, 3,000 homes and apartments, you throw, let's just say, three, three people in each one, yeah, you're talking 9,000 people. Sir, how many people are currently in, live, that are residents of Thompson Station? He won't answer. It's about 8,000 residents, 9,000 residents of Thompson Station. So within the next few years, two years, three years, five years, it's going to double. It's going to be another 10,000 people. It's crazy, that's insane. But anyways, we're here to help, you know, maybe, maybe that you'll hear our voice, maybe. And hopefully, you do. And again, you know, this is our livelihood. This is where we live, this is where our families are living. Some are born here, raised here, newbies here, and, you know, some of the folks who spoke last time had said that, you know, there's, they, where they are currently, their home currently is, that there's all this construction going around them. They can't fix what's happening today, but they can help fix what's happening tomorrow. And that's what you're here for. That's why we're here. Who's here against Thompson Station grabbing all this land, just a, just a real good hand? And look, we've been here, every meeting, some people are new here to these meetings, some people have been every meeting, 9:00 a.m. meetings, 6:00 o'clock meetings, Tuesdays, Wednesdays, Thursdays, Fridays, whatever, we've been here for the past, you know, months. Just listen to them. Listen to what they've got to say. And if we wanted to go live in this type of, this type of environment that Thompson Station wants to create, we would go back to Nashville, go back to Boston, go back to, you know, again, West Haven, Tollgate, go to Tollgate. You know what, it's there. If I wanted to live in Tollgate, I'd move to Tollgate. But we don't want that anymore. Thank you.
Charlie Hafner, and then after that, Marty Benefield.
I'm Charlie Hafner, 2795 Al Halla Road. I will thank y'all for your time. I know it's not a pleasant task that's put before you. I pray you'll do the best you can. A little bit about the Halla, you know, I've spent the entirety of my 70 years there, my primary residence, and fortunately, you know, the majority of the families that live there are still there, everybody I grew up with. The Thompsons on the front end of the Halla, the Beaches in the middle, and us, the Leon, who's a grandson of Mr. Nolan Willie Bob, spent many hours with all of them. The Atkinson's and the Oden's in the far end of the Halla. We grew up together, we've lived our whole lives, you know. We have a few newcomers, and they're welcome, but we'd like to keep it, just if we can. I know it's a tall order. I thank you for your help.
Marty Benefield, and then Lindsey Warden, Hancock Warden. Marty?
I'm Marty Benefield. I live at 2746 Al Halla Road, and obviously, you realize I'm not from Boston. I've lived here for a while. All right. We own the first, my family owns the first 103 acres. It would be at where you intersect with Al Halla Road. We own 3/10ths of a mile on Al Halla Road, and then the first 2/10ths of a mile on Highway It's formerly known as the Thompson family. So I apologize to anybody that's in Thompson Station. That is actually my family. So, obviously, we've been here for a minute or two. You just heard from Charlie. We've all lived together, grown up together. Uh, as a matter of fact, when I was 16 years old, they opened up a muzzleloader deer season. I asked his daddy to let me borrow a muzzleloader, and he, more than graciously, let me borrow it. That's just the kind of people that you have. But when you start, one of the problems right now is, and obviously, everybody in here does not want to be in this urban growth plan. But the infrastructure is horrible. We know that, everybody knows that. Why can you not come up with a plan to fix that first with what you have? You've already got thousands and thousands of more people coming in, and you still haven't addressed the initial basic problem. Where's the infrastructure? I mean, if we get into Spring Hill, what's, you're still not even going to pick up my trash. I'll still be taking it to Bethesda. You offer me nothing, absolutely nothing. Sure, my property value may go up. Developers want us for sure, because Spring Hill property, our, where our property lines at, you cross the fence, it is Spring Hill right now. And that's obviously where the interstate exchange is coming through, so obviously, there's going to be growth next to our property. But one of the problems with this growth, you know, when you start talking about high-density houses, apartments, I've been around, I'm only 53, but I do remember a place, kind of in South Nashville, that they started, didn't work on the infrastructure, they did high-density housing and all this kind of stuff. Well, it was great in the early 80s. It was high-flying place, everybody was moving there. Then about 15, 20 years later, they started having a problem, started having crime, started having issues, drug problems, just everything. Well, i- if the pace that you're growing, what you're going to look at in 15 or 20 years is going to be similar to that with similar problems. And that place today is called Antioch, Tennessee. And I don't think there's a single person in here who wants to live in Antioch, Tennessee. Thank you for your time.
Lindsey, uh, and then Ellen Warden.
Good evening. My name is Lindsey Hancock Warden. I am a nearly lifelong resident of Williamson County. I currently live within the city of Franklin, but grew up in Thompson Station. My family has lived here in Williamson County since the early 1800s. I am the ninth generation of my family to be born and raised in this area. My childhood was idyllic, with visits to my grandmother out on Pinewood Road in Leapers Fork, and my great aunt on Thompson Station Road West, picking up my high school sweetheart, now my husband, at his home in the unincorporated county off Highway 31, and driving backroads together with the music turned up, fishing our county's ponds, rivers, and streams with my dad and brothers, enjoying a picturesque sunset, or listening to a train go by off the back deck of my in-laws' house. It has been so special now to raise my five-year-old here, to show him all of my old stomping grounds, and to share the unmatched natural beauty of our rural areas with my 10th-generation Williamson Countyan little boy. I was his age when my family first moved from Franklin to Thompson Station in 1998. There wasn't much more there at the time than the Little Green BP Gas Station and a handful of churches and historic buildings. Over the years, I have watched the explosive, and in my opinion, destructive growth in that area of the county, and felt my heart break over and over again as generational farms, wooded areas, and other beautiful landscapes have been wiped away by more and more poorly planned development. The creeks I used to walk and hunt for minnows and crawdads in with friends, the fields we caught fireflies in as we ran barefoot long into the evening, spending entire summers outside, are either no more or no longer accessible. Across from the Jones Chapel Cemetery in Burwood, where multiple generations of my beloved ancestors are buried, 840 creates an eyesore and noise pollution in a once quiet and peaceful place of reflection. These are the results of unchecked growth. The newly proposed urban growth plan would place a large swath of land near my in-laws' home, as well as a significant portion of Johnson Haller Road, where generations of my family were born, lived, died, and are buried within Thompson Station's UGB boundaries. I am strongly against that city's grab for additional land, particularly when there is not the infrastructure in place or planned for to support it. I have spent much time in large cities such as Atlanta, San Diego, and Washington DC, and I can say without exaggeration that I have never experienced traffic as frustrating or as gridlocked as that between Franklin and the Thompson Station and Spring Hill areas on the weekdays during morning and afternoon rush. It takes me an hour in the afternoons to get from my home off of Royal Oaks in Franklin to my parents' home in Thompson Station. Let's preserve the places and spaces that make our county special. Oh, sorry. For many of us, our rural areas are part of our heritage. They're part of us, and we are proud of them. We shouldn't sacrifice them for another unattractive zero-lot line subdivision or strip mall. Growth is inevitable, but the wholesale decimation of our county's rural areas is not. I would urge our county and city leadership to listen to these citizens behind me and to preserve these spaces for the next generations to enjoy. Thank you.
Ellen Warden, and next, Huntley Gordon. Ellen?
Okay, hi. My name is Ellen Warden. I'm 19 years old, and I'm going to be speaking on behalf of people who are my age and probably are too scared to come and talk to y'all. Um, my family has been here since the late 1700s. I was born and raised in Franklin, and I just have some concerns with the growth plan. Um, in my opinion, I don't think that we have the capacity for the amount of people that you're encouraging to move here, because honestly, do you even have enough teachers in our school system to be able to teach the kids that are going to be moving into our school system? Um, I go to school at Western Kentucky University, and on my drive home today to make it to this hearing tonight, there was an insane amount of traffic. In Franklin, we don't have the excess land to extend, um, and add lanes to our roads. On Columbia Avenue, you cannot do that, there's no room for that. When you have that many cars on the road, it is very dangerous, and you will end up overworking our first responders. How long has Franklin Road been under construction? I know for a fact that it's been under construction for at least 40 years, because it's been under construction since my parents were children. Another issue with the growth plan is how destructive it is for our ecosystem. The Harpeth River watershed is currently at a historic low. When you ruin our beautiful landscapes, you also force animals out of their natural habitats. Not only are you destroying my home, but you're destroying theirs. Um, what will set us apart from other cities if we don't have our Franklin charm? The things that make Franklin Franklin are very important to our community. Whenever you build cheap, cookie-cutter homes, you're going to lose the appeal that Franklin has. When the appeal is gone, we are going to be left with an excess amount of homes. I've lived here my whole life, and whenever I graduate college and want to move back home, I won't even be able to do that and raise a family here because of how expensive housing is. Um, I don't want to see the amount of homes that are going to be built by these carpet-bagging developers who just want to make money. We are losing what makes Franklin Franklin, and it will negatively affect our community. I don't want to move back to Franklin if it's going to be a miniature Nashville. This is my home, do not ruin it with ugly, poor-quality homes. Part of Franklin's charm is the historic unique homes. Do you really want to ruin a beautiful place just to make a little extra money? The developments have shut down small businesses, increased traffic, and they will ultimately ruin our city, and I hope that you decide what's right. Thank you.
After that, Stacy Turner.
Uh, good evening. My name is Huntley Gordon, 1940 Lewisburg Pike. During this process, we have heard multiple points of view. Property rights have been a recurrent theme on whether inclusion or exclusion from a UGB should be considered. The majority of those speaking against inclusion in the UGB live in subdivisions in the county and are not satisfied with exclusion from municipalities' UGB. In doing so, they are trampling on the rights of their neighbors. It seems they want neighboring property to be excluded to prevent the possibility of future development. It's ironic, because without development, their subdivisions, uh, their opinions would not exist. And this contradictory assertion of neighboring property rights being respected is not well-reasoned as it appears. They are respected only if they remain the status quo. Please close the gate after my subdivision. This is not proper planning for the future. The county and every municipality have planning departments, as well as a planning commission comprised by the citizenry. The UGB process defines which municipality or the county would have jurisdiction over future development in their respective UGB areas. Considerable tax money is spent developing and adhering to future growth plans. Excuse me, plans. If a property is included in a UGB of another municipality, it prevents a neighboring municipality from annexing the property, with preference given to the larger municipality. This constricts development when the larger municipality does not adhere to the mandates of the Tennessee Code. TCA 658-106 mandates a municipality shall identify a territory sufficiently large to accommodate residential and non-residential growth for the next 20 years. This territory should be contiguous to existing boundaries and be territory which the municipality is better and well-prepared to serve than another municipality. It must also reflect the municipality's duty to facilitate full development of resources within the current boundaries and to manage and control urban expansions to efficiently and effectively provide urban services. Property in the Franklin UGB within Southwest Basin 2 and Southwest Basin 3 have been within the Franklin UGB for 22 years, and according to Franklin, still have an unknown timeline for the extension of sewer, and the city's annexation capacity analysis remains long-term. Why is the property within Southwest Basin 2 and Southwest Basin 3 proposed to remain in the Franklin UGB? It appears to prevent annexation by another municipality. What other answer could there be? Franklin has had 22 years and doesn't have a budgeted solution, and its capacity analysis remains long-term. I assert it has been long enough. How is the efficient and effective provision of urban services attained? This is not it. Let's formulate a map which benefit, which benefits all the municipalities in Williamson County that allows full development within the municipal, within the municipality's UGB to manage and control urban expansion in an efficient and effective manner. For the areas outside of a municipal UGB, the county has proven to be competent and capable of developing subdivisions as well. Just look at the yellow shirts.
Next, we have Stacy Turner, and then Anna Schaefer.
Thank you for allowing me to, uh, express my opinions here. My name is Stacy Turner, and I'm representing my family, which resides at 1770, 1772, and 1778 Wiltz Lane, Spring Hill. It's 200 acres of active farmland. We're one of the last farms in Williamson County, both geographically and literally. My family's been actively farming in southern Williamson County area since the 1700s. I don't even begin to underst- understand how many generations that is. We've currently been on Wiltz Lane since 1963. In my lifetime, I've farmed most of what is covered in houses in Thompson Station and Spring Hill and General Motors right now. I remember in 1985, when GM landed, the sign coming into Spring Hill said, "Welcome to Spring Hill, population 940." I'm proud to say I was one of those originals, 940. Our latest loss is the farm we've had rented for many years to the new Williamson County School on Wiltz Lane. They built the school, and the rest is soon to be developed. We have generations behind us that would like to continue to farm, but where do they do that? In Williamson County. I ask you, I ask you, think about it. Where's your food going to come from? Is it Publix or Kroger? There are no more farms to rent, for me to rent. I can't afford to battle the, um, builders and speculators in the pursuit of agriculture. All my family wants to do is continue raising cows, raising hay, but how do we continue? In 1985, neighbors and I spoke out against the landing of Saturn in fear of what we're dealing with right now, unregulated growth. According to the census, Spring Hill has a population of 59,282 people. While like most anything coming from the government today, I don't believe it, because I think there's a lot more people than that. All I'd say, um, I would say it's a lot more, and really, since 1985, we seen no infrastructure improvements, just crowded, unmaneuverable streets. I'm no scholar, don't want to be in politics, really don't have time for it. I work a job, and I farm what most full-time farmers do, but I'm an observer. And I've witnessed these city officials, in my opinion, heavily influenced by the power and greed allowing these builders to run wild. Planning in this area is a oxymoron. Whoever heard of a parkway like Miles Johnson Parkway so narrow that you can't get a firetruck down, or in my case, a 24-foot trailer with a tractor on it, because I can't drive the tractor, um, due to the street so narrow and cars parked on both sides?
Basically, if you would wrap it, uh...
I'm, I'm, I'm getting there. Um, I think it's a shame when people pour their heart out, like I'm doing tonight, and voice their opinions about these reckless governments, and we have a city administrator that's playing games on their iPad. Do we as citizens really have representation? Or does the builders, investors have representations? One of the number-one TV shows right now is Yellowstone, and if you watch this show, you understand the premise of the whole show is exactly what we're dealing with right here. Of course, without the train station and the drama, the premise, the premise is pretty much the same, maintaining generations of agriculture in our way of life. In my family's case, we just want to be left alone. We don't want in Spring Hill's growth plan, we don't want in Thompson Station's growth plan. We just have genera- we have our own plans. We have generations of kids coming behind us that want to be involved in agriculture and feeding people. Thank you for listening.
Next, we have Anna Schaefer, and then Sally Rochette. I would ask, we've still got a lot of folks, and we want to get through everybody. Two minutes?
I'm done. My name is Anna Schaefer, and I live at 1804 Pope's Chapel Road in Burwood. I'm here tonight because my husband and I want to stay in the county and not be a part of any town's urban growth boundary. I have moved 27 times in my life, but have been blessed that the last 30 years have been in Burwood. Among my travels, I lived in Barrington, Rhode Island, a suburb of Providence. Not too far from Barrington is a town called Little Compton, a coastal town bounded on the south by the Atlantic Ocean and on the west by the Secconnet River. Little Compton looks today like it must have looked in the 1950s. Upon entering that bucolic little town, you immediately sense the peace and quiet of that place. The homes there are surrounded by lots of green grass and trees. There is little traffic. When I lived in Rhode Island, I used to hear stories about Little Compton and how closely the town fathers guarded their little town by the sea, permitting very little change. So, I called the City Hall last week and spoke to Carol Wardell, the town clerk, to ask just how they have been able to save Little Compton from development overgrowth. Her immediate answer was, "We say no a lot." Her immediate answer was, "We say no a lot." She said they have two-acre zoning and a five-member town council that jealously guards the land. You can stand by the water's edge in Newport, Rhode Island, and look across the water to Little Compton and see cows grazing. Pocahontas is buried in a cemetery in a neighboring town. Currently, 1,000 cars drive past my gate each morning between 6:00 and 8:00 a.m. and they all return at the end of the day. I would bet that 1,000 cars don't even enter Little Compton in a 24-hour period. So, I'm asking all those who have the authority to do so to guard our land and please keep Berwood out of your urban growth boundary. Thank you.
All right. Next, we have Sally Rochette and then Judy Barnhill.
Good evening. My name is Sally Rochat. I live at 2633 Thompson Station Road East, right next door to where they're demolishing Thompson Station to build Parsons Valley and then the subsequent apartments that I'm going to have for neighbors directly across the street. Last year, I attended a meeting at Thompson Station Town Hall where consultant Kim Lee Horn spoke with Thompson Station residents to get their input on the growth and the development taking place in town. And I'm quoting directly from All Aboard. "Single-family detached housing dominates residential use within the town. Thompson Station is viewed as a prime spot to establish roots, roots like these people have, and grow a family. Thompson Station residents value their privacy and space, as much as the existing lots are 1 to 10 acres in size. As Thompson Station grows, more demand for diverse housing options will emerge." However, this is from your All Aboard. "Higher-density housing options should be considered sparingly and in keeping with the town's goals for growth to maintain the town's rural, small-town character. I find it ironic that this homepage shows what we want. That's not what you're proposing. What you have right there, keep it there. That's what we want. We value our privacy and space. High-density options should be considered sparingly. Can someone tell me what is sparingly about dumping 2,500 new residents right next to my driveway on a two-lane road in a one-mile radius, one mile, from my house to Sanctuary Bluff? That's what you're dumping into that two-lane road. It's reckless, it's dangerous, it's not sparing. At September's meeting, when asked about the apartments, Commissioner Tara Rumppler asked the developer, "Why here? Why across the street from another development going in on a two-lane road?" The answer from the developer was that they were following the long-term plan of the town. This is what the town wanted. It's what the town wants. It's not what the residents of the town want. That was spelled out in All Aboard. We want our privacy, we want our space. We do not want 2,000 nor neighbors on a two-lane road. You were told that. Did you listen to that? That we value our privacy and our space and sparingly, high-density, sparingly. From their June update, Kim Lee Horn says, "Under land use, plans for new growth should strike a balance between demand for new residents and preservation of rural character. Under community character, Thompson Station should protect its rural, small-town identity." That is your consultant, Mr. Mayor. You're destroying our identity. Tearing down our forest, destroying our small-community neighborhoods, overcrowding our schools, overwhelming our already overcrowded streets is not protecting our rural identity. How is that preserving our rural character? It is not. What you're allowing in our town is destruction. Developers have come in and they wreck havoc on our neighborhoods and our towns. And now they want to go outside the city limits, the town limits, and they want to grab more land.
Sally, can you wrap it up, please? Thank you.
Until the town of Thompson Station and Spring Hill can take care of the residents and listen to and respect the residents that are within it, they don't deserve more land to manipulate. Don't reward these towns by giving them more residents to make unhappy, more residents to destroy their land. Let them build the infrastructure first, then worry about development. We don't need more houses right now. We need roads, we need schools, we need teachers. You said a few weeks ago, "You lose sleep because we don't have enough bus drivers." Where do you think these kids are going to go?
Sally, if you can wrap it up.
Thank you for your time.
We have Judy Barnhill and then after Judy, Janet Curtis. Man?
Good evening. Thank you for letting me speak with you. My name is Judy Wilson Barnhill and my husband and I live on our family farm at 1795 Sedberry Road. I thank you again for this opportunity to share my thoughts regarding the urban growth boundary on which our property is located. I'm a seventh-generation Williamson Countyan. My husband is a fifth-generation Williamson Countyan and this property that we live on has been in his family since 1957. I sent a letter to Mayor Stover and all the Thompson Station aldermen last week expressing our desire to have our names and our property removed from that portion of the Williamson County part that would become Thompson Station. He promptly answered my email, which I appreciated, and suggested that I make sure that I had not received misinformation. I appreciated his prompt reply. I also responded to him that we wish to remain just as we are and that our family farm would remain intact for our children and grandchildren. I have a notarized document available for you that gives you the map number and the parcels of our property if you would like it. I appreciate the interest of the newer residents in becoming active in our community. However, I would also appreciate it if the newcomers would be aware of the deep roots and the love that we longtime residents have for this land, our home. Progress is wonderful when it's well-thought-out and well-planned. It is my opinion that much of this planning has not been as studied well and certainly has not included the thoughts and wisdom of those of us who were born here. I'm 77 years old. The combined years of residence of the Thompson Station mayor and alderman is less than my 77 years, the time that they've lived in this county. Let me make this analogy regarding good planning. If I were to invite everyone in this room to my home to a dinner party, I'd plan the menu, check the RSVPs, shop for my groceries to make sure that I had enough of everything I needed for all who were planning to come. My guests would be pretty upset if I were not able to provide what they wanted and what they expected when they were invited. Without prior planning for these people, houses, cars, infrastructure, police and fire services, and other basic needs, you're planning a party without enough services for your guests. Think about it. Please restore my faith in your good intentions by making sure that what you say about not being forced to be annexed is actually true. One told me, "We cannot be annexed without prior approval or request." Another said, "It's already done, it's a deal." So, which one's true? Williamson County has been a jewel in our state for many years. Please let's all work together to make sure that it does not become tarnished in the name of unplanned, unregulated progress. I believe that most of the residents of Williamson County here today would agree with me. Finally, one question for the committee to consider as they vote on these proposals. Have you made adequate plans for the people you expect to come to your party? Thank you very much.
We have Janet Curtis and then after Janet is Rick Canada. Ms. Curtis?
Thank you. My name is Janet Curtis. I live at 3665 North Chapel Road, which is in the Mays Creek Basin of the city of Franklin's UGB. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. First, I'd like to remind everyone that during the community meetings for our 2040 Plan, the residents overwhelmingly voted for the Town and Country Comprehensive Land Use Plan. By the looks of and in the interest of progress, it does not appear that the will of the people is being honored. Worse yet, it appears to be totally ignored. We did not ask for the traffic problems or overcrowded schools, yet we are the ones that will be bailing out our billion-dollar debt by increased taxes, as we all know, growth does not pay for itself. If property owners do not want included into any city's UGB, this should be honored and their property removed from the proposed boundary. If property owners were included in the 2020 Plan and services are not yet in place, those property owners should have the right to request removal if they do not wish to be part of the city's growth plan. Secondly, I agree with what was mentioned at the last public hearing that each city should be required to maintain the same zoning in their UGB-designated area and the county government and county residents should have a say as to what is developed in that area. Land from any city to our beautiful county should be one home to one or two acres, as county land is now one home to five acres. This would be a nice transition from city to county, giving a better feel and preserve the character of the bordering areas. You have been made to believe that this is sprawl, but we all know that it was just an engineering developer tactic when told that a conservation subdivision preserves more open space. County residents do not want to see rooftops and side yard setbacks so close that you can stick your arm out your window to your neighbor's window when borrowing a cup of sugar. Thirdly, this can all be achieved with an inter-local agreement between the county and all the cities within its borders. With an inter-local agreement, perhaps you'll be able to require the infrastructure, schools, and necessary safety requirements in a place before the building is permitted. Thank you for your time and I ask you to please keep the people's thoughts and opinions in mind when you vote on this important decision. Thank you.
We have Rick and after that, Margie Spivey. Rick?
My name is Rick Canada. I live at 4348 North Chapel Road, Franklin, Tennessee, also in the Mays County Creek area of the Franklin UGB. I'm going to deviate a little bit from my statement here that I wrote. I've been in Williamson County, unlike these fine folks, I'm a newcomer, I've only been here 32 years. I lived in Brentwood for the first 14 of those years and I left Brentwood because of the fact that the city of Brentwood failed miserably to maintain the character that Brentwood was when I first moved there, 14 years, or actually moved there in 1991. They failed to keep their promises, they failed the people, and the people who could leave, left. The urban growth boundaries were established over 20 years ago. I remember that when there was, in fact, there was a pretty good feud between Nolanville and Brentwood over where that boundary was going to be. I remember that feud. It's my understanding the state of Tennessee created a program to allow municipalities to claim land currently not in their city boundaries for future development. Of course, this was done ignoring one of the founding principles of our country, democratic representation. These boundaries were arbitrarily established without consulting the people who live there and to this day, many people don't even realize that they live in an urban growth boundary or much less understand what it is. Why would people, why would people we did not elect have the authority to come and claim an area for themselves without consulting the people who actually live there? What is it they don't want the citizens to know? Who are they working for? Obviously not us. We have absolutely no representation, not one person who has to answer to us like they would if we were their constituents. Before there is another wheel turned, scoop of dirt moved, or foot of land rezoned, the residents of every recognizable area such as the Mays Creek Basin, Duplex Area, Bethesda Region, et cetera, must be allowed to elect representatives with full voting and equal standing to their respective city councils, BOMA, or whatever form of governance is responsible for running the municipality that wants to take them over. The people who actually live in the UGB, and I don't mean the people who are coming in and simply buying land for development, deserve no less representation and an equal voice like any other municipality resident enjoys. Of course, that's not going to happen now. What we do have, I believe, is an opportunity, a pathway for removing ourselves from the UGB. I've been told there's a form or an affidavit that each of us can submit and request removal from the UGB. I've also been told that there are stipulations on the affidavit which require it to be notarized and properly returned to the proper authorities. Hopefully, this should work in a way that will allow street-by-street, mile-by-mile areas by a majority vote who choose not to be in the UGB, which means we can continue living only as residents of Williamson County as we do today. I want to add one more thing. I grew up in the city of Detroit. I graduated from high school in 1965. I wish I could show all of you a picture of my house as it is today, except for one thing. My house was a burned-out Hulk 15 years ago. Today, it's a hole in the ground. The city that I grew up in when I graduated from high school had 1.5 million people in it. Today, it barely has 600,000. That's because people did not plan. The people who were put in charge did not do their jobs. City of Detroit is the largest landmass city, major city in the United States, and most of it today could be translated to farmland. It is a disaster because people who are in positions of responsibility worked out for themselves and didn't look out for the people. Been there, seen it, done it, got the T-shirt.
Margie Spivey and then after Margie, John Hoffman.
Good evening. My name is Margie Spivey and I reside in the Mays Creek Basin at the eastern edge of the Franklin UGB also. My husband and I have lived where we live on North Chapel Road for 26 years. We are 3.1 miles from the interstate and at that time, when we bought, we were not in the UGB and we were really thrilled to be part of rural Tennessee. We were just five miles from the closest grocery store and we were pretty excited about that. At some point over the next few years, the UGB expanded and we ended up in it. In the 26 years that I've lived there, not once have I said, "I wish there were businesses like grocery stores, gas stations, and nail salons within a mile of where I live. I think I can drive the five miles that it takes to get there." Not once have I said, "I would love a planned urban development within a mile of my house." I love rural Williamson County. Nor have I ever wished that the Franklin Police Department handled our area. Dusty and his team do an amazing job for us. I certainly have never said that I want to pay Franklin taxes and Williamson County taxes and I also have never said I want the Franklin Planning Department to have a say in what I build on my property. I also never thought I would say, "Yes, it takes me 45 to 50 minutes to drive 12 miles to work." So, contrary to what many people would have to believe, and you can slot in developers if you want, we chose to live a rural life and we want our home to remain in rural, in the rural county. We love the wildlife animals that visit our farm, deer, foxes, possums, bald eagles, coyotes, wild turkeys, and many more. Most city people don't want to see coyotes. We're okay with that. The howling at night is fabulous, okay? I love to sit on my porch and enjoy the nature without the commercial lights and the racket of high-density development disrupting my happy place. disrupting my happy place. I love that we took our sons out on our property and taught them how to shoot firearms. That can't happen in Franklin, in the city of Franklin. So do I love being in Williamson County? Absolutely. Do I want to be part of the city of Franklin? I do not. So we would like to be pulled from the urban growth boundary as well so that we can remain rural in Williamson County. Thank you very much for your time.
All right, John Hoffman, and then after John, Sid Smith.
Hello. My name is John Hoffman. I live at 3094 Duplex Road. And that's Duplex in Lewisburg Pike, to give you some reference. I'm speaking on behalf of eight families that live in that area in the Duplex Prominence Drive area. We collectively live on over 50 acres. And we don't want to be in the UGB. We've requested that several times. We've gone to these meetings many times, and we continue to request the same thing. I've been involved in this process since we got a postcard that said, "Lucky you. You're now included in the UGB for Spring Hill." The residents have made it clear to the city and the county that we don't want to be included. Spring Hill has continued to ignore us and even insult us in their meetings. They've called us landowners of the day. They've told us, they've told you all that you owe them land. You owe them part of Williamson County. And they continue to tell us that we don't understand and we're misinformed. And finally, a quote from the city administrator. She said she can't say no to developers. My response to that is, "You can control your zoning." I'm not against growth, but I'm against the hypergrowth and the density that Thompson Station and Spring Hill are pursuing. We live in Williamson County for a reason. We like the current zoning. It's been the law of the land for decades. The way of life is under, our way of life is under attack, and the people impacting us should only be, we should only be managed by the Williamson County people, not by these other cities trying to take us over. Through this UGB cycle, Spring Hill will double in size. I wish that map was still there because you would see all the land that Maury County is giving them. So it's not like they're going to hurt for any more property. They have thousands of homes on the books. They have a water tower that they're building because they don't have enough capacity. They have plenty of structure and infrastructure to build that they don't need the majority of the Williamson County Spring Hill UGB section. All of our neighbors have signed petitions. You guys have those petitions. We're simply asking that you take us out. And we were in a meeting October 18th, and you guys actually had a motion to tell these cities to take us out. And if that would have passed, I wouldn't have to be here tonight. Just take us out. Somebody referenced the easy option. Just take us out. We've signed petitions. We've communicated to you that we don't want to be part of the process. Don't force us to be in the UGB if we're asking you to take us out. If you leave us in, our only option is to continue to fight. The meeting last week was the same, probably the same audience, and we're going to continue to be in front of you. And if this actually passes and you leave us in, then my guess is that we move to a different venue. We start moving to the courts. And that's very unfortunate. Who wants to continue this fight and this anger against these areas? We love Williamson County. We just want to stay there. We want to stay in our rural character. Don't force us to be in something we don't want. Listen to what we've said. Please use those petitions that we've signed and remove us from the UGB. Thank you.
Sid Smith, and then Kent Hammerstrom.
My name is Sid Smith. I live at 5110 Harpeth-Patinsville Lane, Thompson Station. You know, I've lived in Brentwood, I lived in Brentwood for 18 years. And then we moved. I had some horses that I got tired of boarding at a very high price. And we moved to a 5.28-acre little farm that I keep my horses there. And, you know, raised all of our children in Williamson County. We've stayed here a total of 35 years. And it's a great place. But I tell you, you guys on this board, you mayors, leadership is tough. It's tough. And you know something? You know, the reason I like Brentwood is because I lived one place and on one side of the interstate and then moved to the other side of the interstate. And you know something? The neighborhoods were all the same. They were an acre, acre, okay? And you know, you knew what to expect when you moved. You know, you could do that today. You're going to expect an acre plot there in Brentwood, Tennessee. Well, you know, the word came that it's going to, you know, we're going to slow the growth in Thompson Station. You know, so we're going to have five acres. Well, I've got five acres, and you know, to myself, I said, "That's a good thing. That's a good thing." And then, all of a sudden, you know, I hear, "Well, it's going to be a one-acre thing." Well, and you know, and I said, "No, that's okay, too." And then, all of a sudden, we come into high-density and condos and all this, and it's happening right up on top of the hill, the other side of 431 from my house. And leadership, it's hard. It's hard because when you start moving the goalposts, you know, nobody knows who's on first, who's on second. When you move, you keep moving and you compromise. We can't do that. As leaders, you've got to dig your heels in and do what you say that you'll do. And so I beg you, I beg you, to stop this crazy urban sprawl and killing. You know, you can go up 431 and almost any day, you can see the biggest red-tailed hawk in America because he's been there for 15 years because I've got to know him. And so I would suggest that we put on the brakes before it's too late. Thank you.
Kent, and then after that, Thomas Stevenson.
Hi, good evening. I'm Kent Hammerstrom. I live at 1509 Casey Creek Lane, Thompson Station in unincorporated Williamson County at this point. Thank you for the opportunity to dress you tonight. You've all been very patient in listening to many of us. I'm sure you're starting to hear the same theme constantly repeated. Forgive me. I'm going to put a couple of things on the record tonight that may not already be there. I live in a subdivision called Casey Springs. We're on the western side of the boundary of the city of Thompson Station. That particular subdivision has been targeted for annexation and also for inclusion in the UGB for Thompson Station. I believe I speak for, I know I speak for myself and for many of my neighbors who have signed petitions and other legal documents that state that we do not want to be part of the Thompson Station UGB, nor do we want to be included in annexation by the city of Thompson Station. There frankly is no benefit to us. You all have heard a lot tonight about people feeling very, very partial about the rural nature where we live. The subdivision I live in is five-acre tracts. The reason I bought land there and we built 10 years ago was because I wanted to be in a rural environment along with my family. We don't want to see that character changed by development. I'll tell you, as a resident right now, I'm very concerned that even if we are excluded from the UGB and even if we're not included with annexation with Thompson Station, we may be surrounded by development around us. And we're going to be, we're going to be constricted by the urban sprawl. This evening, you heard an example by one of my neighbors who said, "A thousand cars, every morning we're passing her home, and the same in the evening going back." I live off that road. It's Pope's Chapel Road and Dr. Robinson Road, which extends down to Beechcroft Road. Mayor Hagaman, Spring Hill, you guys know what the development has been in Spring Hill at the bottom of that area. I look at the Spring Hill Industrial Park, which is coming online now. I'm not sure what the total square footage is there. It's massive. These tilt-up concrete buildings are going everywhere. We've got semi-truck traffic going down a two-lane road, which was never designed to accommodate that, that kind of flow. It scares me to death. I'm afraid for my wife, my children, that travel that road every day. If you drive that road from Mr. Huff's store headed south toward Spring Hill, you'll notice most of the signs are dog-eared. That's because large trucks are hitting those signs. They can't, they can't negotiate the corners. My wife is to the point where she pulls off the road every time she sees an oncoming semi-truck and prays it doesn't hit her or knock her off into a ditch. Someone's going to get hurt. Someone's going to be killed. I want that on the record here before this group that a resident has raised this issue because it's something we need to, we need to put attention on right away. I understand that there may be some broader plans for this road. As a resident, I don't like the idea of, "Oh, we'll just add multiple lanes." It takes away from the character of where we are. This road was never intended to be a cut-through to Highway 840. The 396 Saturn Parkway extension was designed off Beechcroft, off Beechcraft to take that truck traffic easily over to 65. I'm asking you, I'm imploring you, and I've been told the county is the entity that's really responsible for this because of where this road is, that you do something to designate this road as off-limits to heavy truck traffic, particularly semi-trucks. I would, I... I would all, I'm sorry. I appreciate that. One last comment. You've heard about constriction down by Charlie's store there. People sit at the stop sign in the morning, 30, 40, 50 cars deep. It can take 45 minutes to get through a stop sign. How about considering a light? How about considering sheriff's police on the corner to direct traffic if you don't want to pay for that? So that we get some sort of flow so people can get to work safely? Anyway, I appreciate your time and consideration. You've got a hard job. Thank you.
Have Thomas Stevenson, and then Ms. Kathy Marlin.
Good evening. My name is Thomas Stevenson. Reside in Harpeth Woods at the corner of Lewisburg Pike and Harpeth-Patinsville Road. I'm here once again this evening to urge this committee to work with the town of Thompson Station to remove the property east of Lewisburg Pike from their proposed UGB, including Harpeth School Road, Harpeth-Patinsville Road, and Bethesda Road. Among other concerns, we have consistently referenced the lack of honesty and transparency that we've experienced in this process. Now, if I can just highlight one instance of this. Two years ago, a developer purchased 90 acres behind our subdivision in Harpeth Woods off of Harpeth-Patinsville Road. They were fully aware of the county's zoning requirements when they purchased that property. In the October 16th meeting of this committee, Mayor Gorman asked Mayor Stover and Micah Wood which landowners east of Lewisburg Pike wanted to be included in the proposed UGB. At the one-hour, three-minute mark of that video on YouTube, Micah Wood uses this property as an example, saying, "This landowner wants to be included in the UGB." After being pressed on the details of this, Micah states that at the one-hour, 16-minute timestamp, quote, "We have had zero discussion with that developer about development." I want to make sure everyone hears that again. "We have had zero discussion with that developer about development." A concerned neighbor contiguous to that property filed a Freedom of Information Act request to Thompson Station to determine if that was true. And in fact, it was not. We have over 16 emails over the course of two years between Thompson Station and the specific developer. Let me read just a couple of examples. July 7th, 2021, this developer emails Micah Wood, "We would like to formally request you to provide us referendum to annex below properties into Thompson Station town." Micah replies back, attaches the town's annexation policy, and connects him with a contact for another developer and for the utility board, and tells him, once he hears back from the town attorney on the annexation referendum process, he'll follow up with him, and he says, "By that time, I should have more details on which zoning district would best fit your development." August 18th, 2021, "Hi, Micah. It was nice to meet you yesterday." That was from the developer. Same day, Micah replies back, "Was nice to meet you as well." October 22nd, 2021, "Micah provides some more zoning information, stating for T4 and T5, there's no set density maximum like there is in D3." December 21st, 2022, "Micah emails the developer and says, 'We are in receipt of your annexation request. I will get with the town attorney on this and be in touch on the process and next steps.'" January 12th of this year, Micah emails the town attorney, Andrew Mills, and said, "Here's that non-contiguous annexation request. Let's discuss at some point what we need to tell them." By the way, at this point, this developer had not purchased property that was contiguous to Thompson Station. This was all non-contiguous property that they were asking to be annexed. Now, this developer has full right to do what they want to do with their property. However, the lack of transparency is the problem, as has already been mentioned. We're not against growth, but one of our concerns lies in the dishonesty and transparency in this process. If they can be dishonest in front of this committee and less transparent with you all here, how much less transparency do you think they're going to afford us as residents and as people proposed in their UGB? Approving Thompson Station's proposed map not only disregards property owners' rights, but endorses non-transparent practices. I trust each of you seeks transparency in your own administrations and expects the same from your colleagues and other municipalities. Thank you.
All right. We have Kathy Marlin. After Kathy, we're going to take five-to-seven-minute restroom break, and then we'll get back at it. But Kathy, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Thank you all for being here tonight and for listening to our concerns. We have many, oh, first I should say, I'm Kathy Marlin. My husband and I live on 4632 Harpeth-Patinsville Road in rural Williamson County on land that has been in my husband's family for over 100 years. We have many senior residents aging in place in our rural communities that I know personally, many of whom are lifetime residents, such as Mr. Roy Willholt on Willholt Lane. They are the backbone of the communities and represent the history and heritage of our communities. They and their ancestors created the culture of rural Williamson County that attracts so many newcomers to the area and why so many have remained here their entire lives. We owe our seniors a great deal. I share a concern with many residents that development in rural communities can have a negative emotional impact not only on senior residents, their health and well-being, and their heritage, but on all residents as well. Rural communities such as ours have deeply rooted traditions that are important components of the community's identity and health. The community may lose its rural character, its autonomy and control over its own development and land-use decisions. This change, this can change the very fabric of the communities. Also, residents that are in the proposed UGB will be faced with higher taxes and fees. These increased financial burdens will make it especially difficult for seniors and others on fixed incomes to stay in their homes, causing more concerns of whether they will be able to find affordable housing somewhere else if needed. In September of this year, News Channel 2 interviewed Rutherford County Mayor Joe Carr, who stated, "Tennessee is experiencing a boom in population that literally is pricing out the existing affordable, attainable housing market. Unless the Tennessee General Assembly gives each community, all 95 counties, the specific tools they need to address the problem, we will have homeless people on the streets." Carr explained in January of '21, "The median house for sale in Rutherford County sold for $300,000. Two years later, the same house sold for $450,000." Carr stated, "This kind of upward pressure on the housing market literally takes away any affordable housing that previously may have existed. We need the tools to maintain a balance that is quickly eroding away. This is happening in counties across the state, including Williamson County. Finding the balance, Mayor Carr referred to, plus the negative impact on residents placed in the proposed UGBs and how this affects the entire county, needs to be addressed before more expansion is done. For the sake of the entire state of Tennessee, we need to get this right. I urge you to vote no to the proposed UGB. We don't want any services from the cities. All we want is to be left alone." Thank you.
All right. We're going to take a quick break, and then we'll get back at it. All right, everybody. If you'd grab a seat, we'll get back to it. All right, everybody, if you'd grab a seat, we'll get back to it. All right, everybody, here we go. All right, on the agenda, we have James Pope. If y'all would please have a seat, and we're going to work and get through this meeting. While y'all are sitting down, I want to recognize the the two my fellow reserve deputies that are here tonight. Thanks very much to Guy and Perry for being here. They're the volunteers that are here tonight, so. All right, James Pope and then Cam Reed. All right, we'll come back to James. There he is. I've been calling you. We're glad you're here.
It's good to be here. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
For listening. I live at 1771 Casey Spray Road, right there at Thompson Station. We are, we actually live in, I live in the borough community, but we are, it's on, if you walk across the yellow line on my road, you'd be at Thompson Station. I chose years ago, when they wanted to annex us, not to be annexed, and I still feel the same way. We don't, I don't, we don't want to keep our, we want to keep our property in the Williamson County area, not be annexed by Thompson Station at this time. The farm that the Booker girl was talking about earlier, it was 200 acres of that farm. I've been all, I walked all, every hill in that farm. I know that field from one end to the other. And to see the, to see how urban growth works and how it, how it changes things, even in the rural community today, is, is just, it's crazy. My street, when I first moved out there 38 years ago, the only thing you saw down through there was a tractor. Now you go down through there every day, in the morning time, it's 30 to 40 cars, and they don't, they don't go 15 or 20 miles an hour, they go at 50 to 40 miles an hour. You can't hardly walk it in the morning time, that's how bad it is. So with the urban growth in the city and not the infrastructure being, being made to match up with the growth, then it's throwing everything on us, and it just makes it worse. So I choose myself to keep my, keep our family and my home in the, in the rural area and not be a part of urban growth at Thompson Station. Thank you for listening. Y'all have a great night.
Thank you, James. All right, up we have Cam Reed, and then after Cam, Jane Sadler.
My name is Cameron Reed from 6816 College Grove, Tennessee. And my family has been in here for eight generations, and my grandma got my house when she was 22, and now she's 80, so. About 70 years, and every time I'm driving down a road, I like wa, looking at the deer, the cows, and watching them eat grass and all these stuff. Then we're going to Spring Hill and Thompson Station, and a bulldozer, bulldozers are there, and a bulldozer there, and everywhere, and stuff. And I think it's right that we're helping our community, and I love the country. Thank y'all for doing this.
Thank you, Cam. We have Jane Sadler, and then after Jane, Doug Sadler.
Good evening. My name is Jane Sadler, and I live at 4650 Gander Branch Road, Thompson Station. I've been to multiple urban growth boundary meetings, and I will stress again that we do understand the difference between urban growth and annexation, but we all must be truthful to ourselves that one will follow the other. There's been several reoccurring issues. We have a lack of infrastructure. We have high density that is not rural. We are destroying our ecosystem. There's a lack of transparency. We have overcrowded schools. Property owners are being ignored. We don't want more high density. We honestly feel that the construction needs to slow down. We need to get our infrastructure in place, and then we can take the steps later on to maybe expanding. But we need to work on our infrastructure. There are too many people on the roads. The roads are congested. It's too crowded. We are impacting our schools, our police, our fire, our ambulances. We've got to do something with all of our infrastructure to get it where it can be safely managed, people from one point to the next. And I know that Thompson Station did a major thoroughfare planning, but a lot of their improvements are contingent upon federal and state dollars. And we know how long it takes to get federal and state dollars. Spring Hill was lucky to get the Buckner Interchange as a fast grant, but I've been a lifelong county resident of Williamson County. I started driving to MTSU in 1984, going to college. They were going to widen 96 at that point in time. They were going to widen it by the time I graduated in 88. They were going to widen it five years after that. We've been widening 96 my entire life. So we know how long it takes them. They just finally started widening it two years ago. They're not done with it, and people are saying now that it's obsolete. What is going to happen with 31 Buckner, all of these other roads? We need to expand our infrastructure, take care of our infrastructure, and then work on any of these subdivisions. I am asking you at this point in time, deny Spring Hill and deny Thompson Station their urban growth boundaries until the infrastructure can be put in place, we can have solid plans. We don't even have a plan for the schools. We have one school planned in the, the southern area of Williamson County, in the Spring Hill-Thompson Station area. With all of the houses that they're planning, with all of the residents that will be moving in, we're going to need multiple schools. We need to get our planning in place now, because as we all know, we're in a boom, and every boom has been a bust. So we need to make sure we're planning not only for our boom, we're planning for a bust, because I don't want to see vacant houses, vacant lots. Franklin went through it years ago. The apartments there on Royal Oaks Boulevard were the nicest apartments in the area. They turned into second-rate apartments, then they went into condos. It's been a constant battle in this area. We've got to take care of our area. We've got to protect our, our rural nature. We've got to protect our ecosystem. We've got to protect our citizens. So tell them no until we can get everything in place, and once it's in place, then let's consider it. Thank you.
Doug Sadler, and then after Doug, Mark Rampula.
My name's Doug Sadler, 4650 Gander Branch. First thing I want to point out is I'm sorry that you want this, you can't have this. If y'all noticed, that's June Lake. It's bulldozed down. That doesn't exist anymore. So that's, that's where this is going. So I appreciate everything, but I want to start off, but first of all, you've heard quite a few of these good voters. You hear me? Voters. They've said quite a bit, and there's been a lot of temperature, tempers. But one thing I wanted to say, I did a lot of research on some stuff. I'm the type of person that likes numbers. What is the reasoning for all this? I can't come up with it. One thing that I did find that was interesting is in this room, we got three of the biggest or the fastest-growing cities in the state. Is that really good? No, we've heard it tonight. I mean, between Spring Hill, Franklin, and Nolansville, I mean, fastest-growing? That's not a plaque I like on my entrance into my city because of the fact that it probably sat there and read it for 20 minutes waiting in traffic to get into the city. All right. Our travel time to get just to work on average is about the, the nation's average. I don't know where that's at, because it takes me 45 minutes one way, but at the average it's 27.9 minutes. Think about that. We're talking about infrastructure, everything like that. I want to be low on this, but I want to correct some of the numbers we talked at some of the other meetings, is, I mean, there are 7,000 roughly planned unbuilt homes, right? Okay, pulling it off the school's website, Williamson County Schools, we've got 42,000 students, 52 schools. If my Franklin High School education taught me right, that's 807 students per school, okay? Do the math. The average family size is 2.8 people per house. That takes single family, and it takes out people with five, okay? So let's say there's one student per house. That's 7,000 students. If my math is right, I mean, that could mean we're going to need eight and a half schools. I mean, look at the financial statements of Williamson County. Look at our budget, excuse me. I mean, we're, we're giving out, I mean, the other night, we gave out $83,000 in awarded bonds. I mean, 83 million, excuse me. In 10 years, we paid $220 million in interest for these bonds. Where's all this money coming from? It's going to come from all these voters, higher taxes. That's where it's going to come from. Once again, like everybody said, let's be smart about all this. Let's slow down this growth. We don't need four houses on an acre. We could continue on in Williamson County with one house per five acres and still survive and keep our culture and the way we look. Thank you.
All right. We've got Mark, and then after that, Charles Settles.
Always one guy in the room, and I'm the guy today. I am, I'm here as a pastor. I'm a dad of 10 kids, and this is our date night with my wife, so this is exciting for us tonight. But here's what I want to say to you. I'm on a totally different spectrum than most people in this room. I want to thank you for the opportunity to come tonight. My name is Mark Rampula. My wife and I are lead pastors. We founded a church in, in Spring Hill called Southview Church. We're located in Spring Hill. We've been residents of the area for 20 years. Our church has been renting a space in Spring Hill for the last 14-plus years, but we currently own 31 acres, or 13 acres off of 31 in Goose Creek, and the land is in Williamson County between Franklin and Thompson Station. You probably drive by it quite a bit. The reason why I'm here tonight is because I want to voice my support of our land being annexed into Thompson Station. For the past five years, we've been unable to build on it because of lack of sewer. We spent the last two years trying to get release from Franklin, which has been done, to get into the town of Thompson Station, who has offered us sewer in a more timely fashion. We've been put in line for sewer with, from the tollgate. We're trying to get sewer from tollgate area. Now we just wait on the important step of annexation. Why is this important? Because functional toilets matter. And what we want to do is, in all honesty, we want to build a facility that we can have access to sewer so that we can be a place and an asset to the community surrounding us. Our church, with our land, will, will feature an outdoor sports area, walking trails, some sort of school, and venue for the local community. We believe our greatest asset as a church in that community is to bless the town that we reside in, and we hope to be a blessing to the surrounding areas as well as the people that reside in them behind me. So I come tonight to represent the people that call Southview the church, that we can get the resources we need to better serve the community that we're in and build a facility that we've been dreaming about for years now. So we hope you consider this and make our land officially located in Thompson Station. Thank you for your time, and thank you for your service.
Next, we have Charles Settles, and after Charles, John Lee.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for your time. I will identify myself at the end of my remarks if that is all right. It's my first time to be gentle. I'm here tonight to address the proposed changes to urban growth planning for our area and because I believe it is important for citizens to be engaged and ask questions about the decisions that shape their community. To that end, I'm here to tell you a story about some people I know who were unable to be here tonight. First, a woman I know that teaches at a Williamson County school. Her name, what grade she teaches, at what school, or how long she's been there, isn't important to her story, at least not regarding the decision that is before you. What's important to her story is how this decision will affect her ability to raise a family in the area where she's taught our kids for the last decade or so. Second, I'm here to speak on behalf of a friend who's worked two jobs at restaurants in Williamson County for the last two decades. To afford his rent on his home in Columbia and pay all his other bills, he spends about 70 hours a week at work, not factoring in his considerable commute. What's important to his story, again, regarding the decision at hand, is he wishes he could afford to live in Franklin, closer to his work. It would mean he'd get to spend more time with his family, his kids would have access to better education, and public transportation would make it easier for his wife to get a part-time job while they juggle having one car as a family of five. Third, I know a woman who owns a home and a successful business in Williamson County. What's important to her story is how almost all of her newer employees drive at least an hour each way for work, because despite good healthcare and retirement benefits, monthly profit-sharing checks, and generous base wages, even many of her longtime employees have been priced out of living near her business and the people that they've served for decades. Fourth, I have a neighbor who moved here from what I like to call the Left Coast in 2012 to get away from, and I quote, "the out-of-control spending and culture wars." We had coffee a few days ago and discussed his opinion on the urban growth boundary through the lens of his experience. The important part of his story is how everyone out there didn't anticipate how the innate "not in my backyard" human reaction would create the monsters they feared most, and how if we're not careful, he's afraid we'll all allow the same thing to happen here. Fighting reasonable changes to outdated growth plans is how he remembers it all starting. For those in opposition to the urban growth boundary being updated, I hope that these stories have you ask yourselves honest questions about the real problems that we face, which you all want to solve. We ask our public officials to consider the long-term health and wellness of our community when they make this or any decision, and it is only right that we ask the same thing of ourselves. Keeping the current plan, under which most of the problems that exist today occurred or got worse, does not seem like it has much chance of solving any of our problems. If anyone here is truly against reckless expansion, I believe the proposed changes to the urban growth boundary are the best step towards responsible planning I've seen in some time, and that is why I'm in favor of their approval. My name is Charles Andrew Settles. I'm a Williamson County resident. I was born in Franklin. I work in Brentwood, and I am a current resident of Spring Hill. Thank you for your time and for listening.
All right. Next, we have John Lee, and then after John, we have Adam Melcher.
I'm back again. I hope we don't have to go through these meetings very much longer. I guess the, the last meeting, Spring Hill presented four reasons why they thought, and I live at 3085 Duplex Road, lived there my whole life, thank God. But they, you know, why they want to annex, or not annex, get the terminology right, include us in your new expanded UGB. And I don't disagree, well, I disagree with pretty much everything they said, except they said in the past, they have botched it. They don't have a good reputation. I agree with that. But their number one reason was they invested in the interstate access. Well, the only reason they brought it over to 431, T-Dot said you had to to get the funding, but that does no good for our area. It just allows people, when the interstate stopped up, which is pretty much every morning, to come over and stop up 431 and keep everybody on our side of the county from getting to work on time. The second item was the The second item was the areas projected as a growth area. All of Williamson County is projected as a growth area. And in their 2040 growth plan, they are projecting all sorts of things in the area. Well, whatever they call that, my farm is an innovation area, whatever in the world that means, but it's in the land trust and it won't be developed, which shows how much study they did into what this area that they're trying to take over or determine the zoning for. The third reason was to facilitate economic development along I-65. Well, they've got the whole June Lake area to facilitate. Let them get that right before they expand into the east side of the interstate. And their fourth reason was that the area is reasonably compact. And it is reasonably compact. It's a great area to preserve the urban environment, the rural environment, and to prevent the urban sprawl that has happened in the other side of the interstate. So there, somebody last week said, you know, nobody says we've got, you know, they want more people here. And I think the group is, agree with that. The last fellow is the only person I've heard that really thinks the plan is good. What I would like for this committee to do, follow the lead of Brentwood and Fairview and just take everybody out that doesn't want to be. My preference is to leave the urban growth and let all these people stay in the county, which is why they moved there, why I've lived there all my life and hope to continue to live there. So thoughtful planning for the county and do what's best for Williamson County, not necessarily Spring Hill. Thank you.
All right, the last speaker we have signed up is Adam Melcher. But as we said early in the meeting, anyone else that hasn't signed up is welcome to speak after Adam. But if you haven't signed up and you want to speak, please come and be ready. Adam.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Adam Melcher. I reside in the Harpeth Wood subdivision, which this committee is all too familiar with by now. For the record, our scorekeepers have given me the tally. Three speakers so far have been in favor and 36 have been against the urban growth boundaries. Around the house, when our daughter was growing up, the phrase she often heard more than once was it's hard to say no to somebody who gets good grades and is polite and respectful. I have often wondered, what would have happened had Thompson Station given us that same respect and let us out 18 months ago? We would have been happy they listened to us. And one day, we would have woken up to the sound of bulldozers as our neighbors were picked off one by one. We would have never known what we know now. Perhaps it was good that we were silenced and ignored because had they treated us in the manner in which we try to teach our own kids, none of us would be here today. Everybody sitting behind me shares the same concern. We are all concerned that the decisions of this committee will affect our homes and we have no choice in the matter. Those who desire to be included are worried that they may not be given the choice to request annexation, like the church, to circumvent the county zoning restrictions in favor of the lax Thompson Station restrictions. Many of those who desire to be removed have concerns about their health and safety, traffic congestion, the lack of infrastructure, while others worry they won't recognize the place that we all call home. We only ask to be given the same choice to opt out that you give those who wish to opt in. You have a rare opportunity in front of you. By voting yes on the condition that those who wish to be removed are granted that right, you are giving every person sitting behind me the freedom of choice on what they wish to do with their property. None of the closed-door meetings with developers, like the one Thomas spoke about, will be affected negatively while honoring the wishes of the majority at the very same time. In other words, it's a rare win-win for all of us. In this new interlocal agreement, if it's to be an example for the rest of this great state, what example are we setting if the people it was supposed to protect are left to the mercy of the nearby town without recourse? This entire process has made many of us question the very idea of a government for the people and by the people. And I have no doubt that our founding fathers are spinning in their graves because after all, isn't taxation without representation what led to the revolution? A vote from this committee that doesn't allow property owners the choice to be removed from the growth plans of a neighboring town sets a dangerous precedent, one that we cannot ignore. There is no sound argument for disregarding the wishes of every resident in this room that doesn't fall on the wrong side of history. Your vote directly affects the lives of everybody in this room, now and in the future. Please take the win by respecting the voices and choices of every county resident and allow those who wish to be removed from their respective growth boundaries to do so before approving the new plan. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, if you would please identify yourself.
Yes, sir. I'm Betsy Hester. I represent the 2nd district on the county commission, and I appreciate you allowing me to speak tonight. I apologize, I was running a little late. I did not anticipate quite the traffic I ran into. Surprise, surprise, surprise. I wanted to let you know, I want you to please keep in contact with the Williamson County Commission. Know what is happening on the county commission as far as the pulse towards borrowing money and the county debt. It's going to be a long time before certain county commissioners want to borrow money to build schools, more schools. We currently have about four schools, elementary schools in Spring Hill. We have an elementary school in Thompson Station, and it is full to overflowing. I represent the Stormwater Appeals Board. We do strict planning on stormwater. How can you have stormwater regulations when you have thousands and thousands of high-density homes? Trust me, the West Harpeth River is going to flood. Trust me, I've seen the Harpeth River at flood stage. I know people had to be rescued from their cars by climbing on the roof of the car because the Harpeth River was flooding. We're going to have water, folks. Please, please watch your news. Know what Rutherford County Board of Education and the Rutherford County Commission, they're butting heads. The county commission in Rutherford County does not want to give money for new schools. Period. They say no more debt, no more debt. And Robert Ring, I know you know about flooding where you live. Bird watchers died going to see birds along the Harpeth River. They drowned. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
My name's Don Schrempf. I live at 1508 Casey Creek Lane, one block west of Thompson City Station. And I've been a resident there. I am a first-generation resident of Tennessee, of Williamson County, having recently, within little over four years, immigrated from California. I lived in a city of 350,000 people. That was just one of the cities that are there. Obviously, there's 35 million people live in California, and it's declining by 350,000 a year. There's a reason. My city had the same problems that they are having out here. Tennessee is a fantastic place. It's going to grow unfortunately too much with very little consideration to our lifestyle and our standard of living. I don't see any improvement in infrastructure in the rural areas. It's too expensive, too difficult to improve the roads. We're not going to get sewers out in the country. It's a no-win situation. My, for all the members on the committee here, I would like to leave you with just this thought. Everything that you do in Williamson County, including all the communities that you serve and represent, if you approve anything within those areas that you represent, you have to realize it's going to impact all of our community here in Williamson County and in the greater Nashville area. And eventually, it will impact all of middle Tennessee. So I would like you to think long and hard about everything that you consider doing for your communities. I had one more thing to say, but right now, I've kind of had a loss for words for it. But I appreciate the opportunity to have spoken tonight and hope you guys make smart decisions. Thank you.
All right, anyone else that wants to speak tonight, please come forward.
I'm John Anthony Puet Jr. I live at 1951 Evergreen Road. I do not want to be annexed into Spring Hill. I don't need to pay any more taxes. I pay plenty. So much so on 200 acres. So my family's been out there since 1983, I believe. Before that, we moved to, before there, we lived in Mopier Farms. We moved out of there because mom did not want her new baby to be around rattlesnakes. Now we got a new snake out there on Polk Chapel Road and Evergreen as well. The snake I'm referring to is traffic. And it, I know a lot of people have said, y'all have heard plenty about not being enough infrastructure. I've cut hay, I've gathered cattle all over Williamson County, all the way from that 900 acres that Calvin Huglen used to own on Bear Creek Road to Carl Road. I think it's 800, 900 acres over there, I think. I've been all the way over to Livingfield Moore's place over there on Del Rio Pike and Cotton Lane cutting hay. I put more miles, more hours on a tractor than I have a vehicle going down the road. I promise you that. I've been doing it since I was 12 years old, 5th grade. One thing that really gets in my mind is why, why on earth wasn't 65 made into eight lanes while y'all had the equipment there to do it? That was stupid on both counties' part. I mean, Williamson County, we're one of the richest counties in the nation. The money's got to be there, and the same goes for Murray County, too, as fast as it's grown up. I remember, I remember in Spring Hill, nothing was there but Poplar House Restaurant and Alice Chambers Tractor Shop down Highway 31. That's the third bridge that's been out there on Polk Chapel Road. Thank goodness that they finally maybe fixed it right. It used to be a single-lane bridge. Evergreen was tarred and chipped, and so was Sugar Ridge Road. I think, I think infrastructure needs to be the number-one thing fixed. 65 should have been eight lanes all the way to exit 42, exit 46, I'm sorry. Is that right? Yeah, exit 46. Also, a mayor made a comment on this new stretch, Matt Catcher, that we didn't need, that we didn't need four lanes right now. I'm referring to the one that goes from Hillsborough Road to 96 West, when all he had to do was do this number right here and look across the street, across Hillsborough Road, and say, we got four lanes over there. Let's make it four lanes over here. That was another dumb thing, knowing good and well that, knowing good and well, people are going to use that road. Like I say, people got to go pick their kids up, new schools are growing. I've heard Livingfield Moore's place, rumor has it, that's going to be developed. Well, guess what? You're going to have to go back there and make it four lanes now. So, you know, there's been some dumb moves made in both counties. So like the gentleman said, remember who votes for you, is all I ask. My farm is for sale. I don't know if it's going to sell. Like this gentleman here said, he's walked every hill of it. I have too, so we'll just see what happens. I do not want to be annexed. Thank you.
All right, anybody else?
My name is Nicole Karaher, and I live on North Chapel Road in the Maze Creek Basin. And I think it's pretty sad that this here kid's version of old McDonald is here's a dozer, there's a dozer, everywhere is a dozer. You know, it's funny, it's funny, you can laugh, but like, this is what these children in Williamson County are going to be growing up with. And it's not like the idyllic Williamson County that we grew up with, right? Like, I have multiple generations of my family here, too, parents, grandparents, great aunts and uncles, cousins, siblings, niece and nephew, everybody. And it's changed, right? Like, it's just not the same. And I ride motorcycles. I grew up, it's like in my blood. And it's not safe, right? Like, if I want to go for a nice country ride, I have to leave my own county where I live and go to other counties. And a couple of months ago, I was riding with my brother out in Hickman County, and I saw these signs everywhere, Save Lick Creek, Save Lick Creek, Save Lick Creek. We pull over at this little sandwich shop where we stop, and we ask somebody, we're like, hey, we've been seeing all these signs. We get our sandwiches and we go down to the creek ourselves and we have a picnic. And we're like, what's all these signs about? Save Lick Creek? And they're like, oh, those stupid son of a gons over in Williamson County, you would not believe those rich snobs. They're fixing to ship their, their waste, their wastewater over here. They have such uncontrolled growth that they can't even contain their own waste. And they want to send it here into our beloved Lick Creek, which is a tributary to the Duck River. And I thought, this cannot be so. This is like pristine waters, like surely we wouldn't do it. I come home and I take to Google, and sure enough, we wanted to dump our crap in other counties because we have unchecked growth. We can't even contain it ourselves. By the way, where's the mayor? Where is the mayor of Franklin? Where? Where are the people that are supposed to be like, listening to us? When I go to my daughter's schools, they're full. And you know what? On multiple occasions by multiple different people, I got asked, and one of them point-blank begged me if I would drive a bus for the school system, because I know I like driving things. And if I can drive a tractor and a truck trailer, you know, I can drive a bus. And I like kids, and they're like, we need you, please, please, we need you. We don't have enough bus drivers. Like, guys, I just want two things, please. I just want, I just ask you guys to have a backbone and to have common sense. That's it. That's it. It's not that hard.
Good evening. My name is Rachel Finch, and I live at 2974 Burtonwood Drive in Spring Hill. I am not part of what could be annexed with the UGB, but I live in a subdivision along Duplex and Buckner Lane. And the one thing that I have heard tonight from so many very concerned citizens behind me is that they are asking our elected officials to intently and intentionally listen to their cries. And I think that's very important because people who live in Williamson County value the reasons why they live in Williamson County. My husband and I moved here over 20 years ago. I was born and raised in New Orleans, Louisiana, in a city of deep history and culture with a family name that goes back to the founding. a family name that goes back to the founding, and I can see firsthand what happens with growth and what happens with infrastructure and what happens with natural disasters when there isn't proper planning in place. My husband was raised in Denver, Colorado. That is where I met him, and I can say firsthand, after living there from the age of 18 to 30, that the way in which they planned subdivisions and growth in Denver is 180 from how we do it in Williamson County. The infrastructure always came first, and then the development. We moved here almost 20 years ago because I wanted to come back to the South, and my husband was an only child, and he's like, "Sure, why not? But please pick either Tennessee or Virginia," because he did not want to live back in the deep South and deal with heat and humidity for 11 out of the 12 months out of the year, which I can completely understand. And so we moved here, and we have raised all three of our children in Williamson County schools. They have been a tremendous asset for all three of my children, all graduating from Summit High School with honors. I could not ask for better education for my children. But now, what used to be rural roads and watching cows from Summit High School is now fully being developed. Buckner Lane and Buckner Road are being torn apart for the June Lake subdivision, for the interstate access, which in theory, sounds like a wonderful idea. However, where is the thought process for already failing infrastructure? The traffic? I mean, we don't have public transit here. So how in the world do we expect more people to be able to handle the roads in which we have? No shoulders, no sidewalks. They're dangerous. And I know because as a professionally trained and practicing preservationist and cultural resource management expert that has worked here in this county for almost 20 years and across the state of Tennessee in multiple communities, the one important thing is to listen and to learn and to value your historic resources, to value the communities that are here. Everyone who has spoken behind me has mentioned roads that I have traveled before, surveying cemeteries, historic homes, barns. To me, the most important thing is to not only care about the infrastructure and the communities and the growth, but also care for our historic and cultural resources, because many of these places that are gonna be annexed and expanded into the UGB have cemeteries on them. What is your plan for ensuring that those resources don't disappear? We have a lot of preservation advocates here in this county, and I am sure that if they knew that our resources were being just tossed aside and developed into more apartments, more condos, more single-family homes, that they would be here even in larger drives than you see here tonight with the citizens behind me. And I just really ask that you all listen intently to the people who do live here, who do pay their taxes, and want their kids to be able to go to school here. And I understand that so many people want to move here. It's a wonderful place to live. That's why we live here. But I do think that you all should continue to intently listen to what the citizens of this county who currently live here have to say. Thank you.
Before we adjourn, Greg, can you remind us of some upcoming key dates, please?
The 21st, the 27th, and the 28th, and those latter two are if needed.
Yep. So the next meeting that we have is, let me make sure I've got it right on the calendar. It's when now?
It's 9:00 AM at the Enrichment Center.
9:00 AM Tuesday.
So does everybody hear that? 9:00 AM Tuesday, November 21st, at the Enrichment Center will be our next meeting. Then we have two meetings after that, if needed. That'll be the 27th, and then the 28th. Both will be at 9 o'clock, if needed. Is that correct, Mike?
Yes.
Very good. With that, this public hearing is adjourned. Thank you all for coming this evening.